Recording in progress.
Good evening, City of Canby. Thank you for joining us for our regular scheduled meeting on Monday, April 22 for the Canby Planning Commission. We will call this meeting to order and get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Start your engines.
Yeah. Consent item is the draft meeting minutes dated March 25, 2024. Do we have a motion to adopt those meeting minutes?
I move that we adopt the meeting minutes.
I second.
Okay, going by roll call vote, Commissioner Ellison.
Aye.
Commissioner Newworth.
Aye.
I'm an aye.
I abstain, I wasn't present.
Commissioner Englewelling.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, the draft meeting minutes for March 25, 2024 are adopted as written. Moving on to citizen input on non-agenda items. Do we have any citizen input? Negative. Okay, we can just move right past that one. Old business, none. New business, none. Public hearings, none, which takes us to our Planning Commission work session. The Planning Commission will meet in a work session to discuss the following topic, Housing Needs Analysis Update, which is presented by Planning Director Don Hardy. Don?
Thank you, Chair Ellison and Planning Commissioners. Tonight, there's going to be several updates for the Housing Needs Analysis. We're going to go through those. This has been somewhat of a long journey going through this process with the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I'm hoping to shed some light on part of that journey, not going into the, all the details that we discussed with them, but the end result is, we believe we're on the same page with Department of Land Conservation and Development, and specific for the amount of urban growth boundary, residential urban growth boundary expansion area that would be needed in Canby over the next 20 years. So, some of this you folks probably have seen before, but just a starting point here on just the framework around our process here for Oregon administrative rule and Oregon revised statutes. They provide the context for housing needs analysis. And then just as a reminder, Canby did receive a Department of Land Conservation and Development grant for the Housing Needs Analysis work. So, tonight, we're going to cover the latest information on housing needs over the next 20 years at a high level. The urban growth boundary expansion needs over 20 years provide information on housing needs analysis adoption timelines. I'm also going to cover housing production strategy and housing efficiency measures to a degree. And then, really important tonight, I think, is just getting the Planning Commission's questions and input as there will be a May 13 hearing on this topic to have a recommendation for the Planning Commission going to the June 5 city council hearing. You've seen this before, I think, this timeline. This is just kind of gives a general assessment. You can see foundationally, though, up in the upper left corner, established land needs for economic opportunity analysis and housing needs analysis. It really is the foundation for everything that we're going to be doing for the comprehensive plan, transportation system plan, land efficiency measures, and urban growth boundary expansion. One item that's missing is housing production strategies, and that's another topic that goes hand-in-hand with the housing needs analysis. These are all important items that allow us to move forward with the comprehensive plan update process. So, there have been a number of revisions to the housing needs analysis, as you can see. So, April 2023, and then there was another revision, November 2023, and now we're in April 2024. I think we're finally at a place that I think we, on the urban growth boundary piece, I'll go into that a little bit more in detail, but where we've established what that acreage is over the next 20 years, we're still at about 6,000 people over the next 20 years. It's forecasted, still about 2,300 dwelling units over the next 20 years. For the housing needs analysis, we did spend some time discussing this with, with all you folks here. We're using 7% interest rates. Those vary, as you know. Hopefully, they're going to be coming down, but they go up and down. 7% seemed to be a number that was probably conservative, considering that it's probably in the middle between being on the upper end and being extremely low. Housing mix is, is trending towards smaller lots and middle housing, which is really based on the affordability factor in Canby. Probably not surprising. And so, the buildable lands inventory, the most important part of this whole urban growth boundary expansion piece is what's called strike price analysis. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail with that tonight, but essentially, it's a way of looking at the value of property, the value of the home improvements on property as a threshold for removing, removing that property from further consideration of being redeveloped. It's a methodology that's been used in Medford successfully and approved by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. That strike price is something that we intend to use here as well. Housing needs analysis findings, or housing land needs findings, there'll be some discussion around that. And then also, the, the parks land findings. We're going to be getting into other issues as we get into the urban growth boundary expansion. So, tonight, we're really just focusing on housing. There are other elements of the urban growth boundary expansion. There's employment, there's, there's parks lands, there's school lands, there's police and fire. Those are all considered as part of the mix for expansion. But again, with the template tonight being on housing. So, home values, just kind of going through that again. For home values, average home price in Canby is 562,000. Ironically, that's slightly less than it was in 2022, but still very high. 8% annual home value increase over the last five years. Some of the communities, even the ones, and some people were surprised about this, looking at Aurora, Wilsonville, just Oregon City, you're seeing price increases thematically. It doesn't really, one city is not really affordable versus another. They're all fairly challenging for housing prices. Next slide, Lainey. So, housing affordability, again, medium home values or medium home income has increased slightly, 88,517. And then you look at the thermometer, again, this is premised on 7% interest rates, 5% down payment, 30-year mortgage, and it's a struggle for someone making $128,000 to have a mortgage of $500,000. So, that probably just gives it away right there when you look at the average price of a home being 561. And that's someone we're putting in as, as a potential lawyer. An engineer would be around 85,000, able to afford 332,000. Teacher, you can see the, the comparison there, again, 262,000, and that goes to medical assistant and retail salesperson. So, some of these, again, are rent-based, depending on if you can't afford a home, you're going to be renting. But rents are also really high, and they don't appear to be going down anytime soon. So, that's also part of the equation. Next slide here is looking at the housing mix of what's needed of the 2,300 residential units roughly. And the shift, I think, historically, is really going away from standard detached traditional single-family home lots, which are no longer very affordable, to, you still have some of those at 30%, but then another chunk, 32%, is smaller lot and cottages. Those would be like cottage clusters, smaller lots and planned unit developments. Those are, infill may be one of those as well. Another 19% are townhomes and plexes, and then 19% in apartments. And that's what we're looking at based on incomes in Canby for what, what the demographic is and what needs to be served. Next slide, Lainey. This, this slide is a comparison, unfortunately, rent burden, severe rent burden went from 17% in November 2023 to 29% in April 2024. And we were below the Oregon standard in November 2023, and now we're above the Oregon state average, which is 24%. Not a good thing. And again, rents are getting worse. And so, just as an indicator of those, on the dwelling unit assumptions between our November 2023 housing needs analysis and our revised 2024 housing needs analysis, there has been a slight increase in density assumptions. Department of Land Conservation and Development has asked us to look at not comprehensive plan designations, but to look at the actual various types of dwelling per net acre. And that's a slight increase versus the comp plan designations. Next slide. This slide here, and this is again going and doing a little comparison between November 2023 and April 2024. I think the takeaways here are that of the ones in November 2023, only the low category, which had 14.5 acres, was one that had been really tested through prior state approval processes where that could be considered something that might be viable. The state actually gave us input on, for the April 2024, billable lands, I'm sorry, for the April 2024 housing needs analysis, and recommended using a slightly less high strike price, again, strike price being meaning the value of the home on a piece of property. We were using, I think, 530,000. They were suggesting 461,000 as still being defensible. And again, that's based on Medford's methodology, that they've gone through this process recently, successfully, and were able to achieve success without appeal. So, what that means for April 2024 in terms of land needs and deficiencies ranges from about 25 acres of single-family home development, 37 acres for small lots, 14 acres for townhomes and plexes, and 6.8 acres for apartments. And again, this would be beyond the current urban, beyond the current boundary, growth boundary, it'd be, this would be an expansion of the urban growth boundary. So then, again, this kind of shows it in graphic form of what the inadequacy is in low-density residential is the primary, ironically, the primary area that's a deficiency in low-density residential in R1. There is a slightly less in medium-density residential and, and high-density residential, there's the least. But that gives the spread of what's needed to be, for the boundary that's going to be, that would need to be expanded, what the, what the zoning designations or the comprehensive plan designations would need to be. Next slide, Lainey. And again, this kind of gives the same information, but in written form. And distant note on the bottom is that housing efficiency measures, and we're working through with Department of Land Conservation and Development on this, our understanding is that upzoning, if property in the current boundary is upzoned, meaning that it is, goes from, let's say, R1 to R15, or R15 to R2, that that would be something that would end up adjusting the need that the 80 acres of land need. I'm not exactly sure what the formula is. We're working through that with the state right now, but there will be some adjustments to the 80 acre, 80 acres if we do upzoning within the city. So, the housing needs analysis and housing production strategy, next steps, we're again required to look at housing efficiency measures, and those are coming back, will be coming back in discussion to the Planning Commission in, in June, June 24. That will be coming back in work session to talk more about housing efficiency measures. Housing needs analysis is going to be coming to the Planning Commission again on May 13, which is what we're talking about tonight. And then housing production strategies, which are the strategies to make housing more affordable based on the housing needs analysis information, will be discussed with the city council in May, on May 15. And then, council will also hear the housing needs analysis at a hearing on June 5. So, for housing production strategies, work sessions have not been established yet for the time of those, the exact time, but there'll be summer, fall. So, after the May 15 housing production strategy, there will be a work session with the Planning Commission. Next slide is, I mean, it's going to go there, and that, no, back one, back one. And so, the, I was just going to go through kind of at a high level. We're not talking about these tonight really in detail, but the land efficiency measures that we've identified are planned unit development code updates, creation of cottage development ordinance, and creation of mixed-use overlay along 99E for parts of 99E. And these are required to address housing demand, to look at housing demand, and to lessen the demand for urban growth boundary expansion by these measures through the Department of Land Conservation and Development. These are the measures that we have put into place, and are, those are going to be coming forward back to the Planning Commission again on June 24 in work session. Back to the previous slide, Lainey. I kind of did these out of order. Back two, two up. So, the housing efficiency measures, again, to give you the full schedule, there'll be, the Planning Commission hearing will be in August, work session in June, as I mentioned, and then to the council in October. So, a couple slides more, Lainey. Forward, keep going, please. And tonight, I'm not going to go through these in detail. These are housing production items, but I just wanted to identify, there are a number of them that will be part of the discussions with the council on May 15, and also with the Planning Commission. And they'll, we'll have more detail about these. And these are supposed to be implemented over an eight-year period. And we'll have a lot more discussion around these after the council has their discussion on May 15. But these are items that will end up becoming implementation items. Several of them, as I mentioned, cottage cluster, planned unit development, and commercial zoning to allow mixed-use housing are already efficiency measures that we're moving forward with to implement this year. The other ones would be implemented over likely a four- to eight-year period. Next one, Lainey. There are a few additional ones. We're still working through with Department of Land Conservation and Development. And these are, those items, we'll also be bringing those forth, in talking more about those in detail. We're also trying to get a little bit more clarification from Department of Land Conservation and Development on required items versus those that are suggested. And that's something we'll have more information on as well. Next item. That brings us to the end. And if there's questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
The floor is open. Any commissioners have questions?
If no one has anything pressing, I always have some questions. So, the changes that we saw in these numbers being updated, were they being driven by the DLDC or just the requests that we made to the contractor to reevaluate some of the assumptions?
They were, they were both. And I think initially, this thing's bounced back and forth. And I think, I'm just going to, full transparency, I think there were some methodologies that our consultants were using that were not really tested through the state process. It's not to say you could not use those, but you're vulnerable for appeal, and those are participation rates, which it makes completely logical sense. And other states use it this way, but it doesn't work in Oregon where you can look back and say, what did you absorb over the last 12 years? And can you use that same percentage rate? Or the last 20 years, what did you absorb? For better or for worse, that's not how Oregon methodology is. You have to use very specific methodology, or it's fraught with possible contention and, and appeal, which is something we would really like to avoid. And I think really, the, this one thing to add in this is the analysis that, and all this discussion going forward was trying to find something that was reasonable and defensible in the end. And that's really it, because I think we could pick a methodology, and then we'd be the only ones in the state using that, and probably would lose on appeal after we spent tons of money on something. And, and I think we kind of need to move this forward because it's holding up everything else in our entire process. So.
The numbers seem a lot more realistic to me about what people might be able to afford. I think it probably settles down to, when you apply for a loan, the banks are always overly optimistic about what you can afford versus what a reasonable assessment of your income and what you're paying. But it seems a lot more in line. So, I was glad to see that. So, the density increases on slide nine were also based to that. And I know you didn't want to get too in the weeds on the strike price, but could you talk a little bit about? You mentioned that the new strike price went from 530,000 down to 460,000. And strike price is the price at which land could be written off because the building on it might not be worth what the land is?
So, the land value, and again, this is where our consultants can be a lot more precise on this, but the general concept is that there is a methodology, and it's been used across the state, where if you have a certain home value, and it probably makes sense from just the perspective of would someone convert their property, tear their house down, and, and redevelop at a certain price point, the assumption is you will not do that. And pragmatically, I think most people already understand that intuitively, that, you know, you aren't going to spend, you know, close to half a million dollars and tear your house down to, you know, re-subdivide it. You know, I mean, that's at least not here, maybe in Arizona, where there's, yeah, I mean, there are, you know, the market factors are not here in Oregon. They just are not here. They're not here in Canby. You might have different market factors in Portland, but they're just not here for a tear down. That's just not something we're seeing. And so, it's really, it's about looking at the value, and DLCD was suggesting that we dive deeper into that methodology and, and look at comparison to what Medford did, because they used the same thing. And so, the strike price that we were using was higher than what they suggested we needed to be using. Therefore, it yielded more demand for acreage. Because if, the concept is, if you have a lesser price at the point where you're removing land from conversion factor, this has to do with largely with partially, with partially vacant land.
So, there's actually more land demand when the strike price is lower?
Well, the threshold, the threshold of like, a lower threshold, my understanding, is you would remove that at a lower value than at a higher value.
Gotcha.
So, the difference, the delta between 460 and 530 roughly would be, there's more land in that than you would think there would be.
And that needs to be added to the UGB that's necessary to meet our goals. Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just a question out of ignorance. So, if we're looking at the numbers changing about, you know, townhouses versus small lots or cottage clusters, does that change the physical, you know, the space that we're considering for the expansion for housing? Like, the direction or?
I think that, I mean, largely, you know, I think our zones, we have, you know, the three zones that are in play. I think they could fulfill what we need, what we need in terms of, I mean, we don't need to have other zones necessarily to create your, the ability to capture 2,300 units. I think part of this is, I mean, so we could actually, you know, do that in that fashion based on our current zoning provisions. We're being asked on our housing efficiency measures, though, to look at things that would even further increase home affordability, like cottage cluster, which would be, and we haven't done the comparison between R15 and, you know, standard development versus cottage cluster, but I know you're, there's going to be more units that would end up happening in that. Part of the trade-off in that as well is, I think there's arguably more of a community you're building with cottage cluster than it is when you're putting homes right next to each other without those amenities. So, that, that's part of that discussion. But there would not, I think our current mix would allow it. Now, one, one thing that's going to get interesting is the urban growth boundary expansion. We could end up creating a new zone in that urban growth boundary expansion. That's not been determined. And so, you know, could that be the same standard zone designations and comprehensive plan designations we currently have? Absolutely. But would it be, could it possibly be something else as well? That has not been determined.
Thank you.
Hey, Don. So, when the comprehensive land use plan was originally passed back in, was it '83?
The '84 is the current version, yeah, yeah.
How many acres were then put in for residential? Do you know?
I don't have that number on the top of my head, but I can tell you that we still haven't annexed all that land. And so, you know, if that, if that's helpful. There's still land available, and that, again, our boundary expansion would even be greater had that happened. But there's still land that's available.
So, I mean, I understand as we grow, we need the smaller lots for, you know, all these smaller units for renting and stuff. But 80 acres doesn't seem like a lot for next 20 years. You know, somebody wants to build a 1,500, 2,500 square foot home. I mean, it seems to me that, we call it not affordable, but every time a house comes on the market, 400 to 700, they get snapped up pretty quickly. I mean, are we planning for any of that kind of expansion?
And you hit a really important point here, which, I mean, that we felt, staff felt the same way, that like, let's find a reasonable number. We were initially thinking it was 50 to 100, and I think we're still landing in that arena. Part of it is, we have to use the building methodology that the state provides and guidance. I personally believe that housing prices are influenced by supply and demand as well, which the current Oregon system doesn't really recognize. It doesn't really recognize market factor that is a part of, of that situation. So, I mean, there's two things that you're asking, I think, there. One is, is it, is that enough land, which according to the methodologies, and we've kind of squeezed this down to the maximum, that's probably all we're going to end up being able to do in that arena. However, the governor also has put forth a provision in House Bill 1570. However, the governor also has put forth a provision in House Bill 1537 that allows a one-time 50-acre urban growth boundary expansion as well. There is no guidance at this point as to whether or not you could cumulatively add that to your boundary that you've justified through buildable lands analysis or not. We've asked the question, and we do meet the criteria for that. That would be a discussion with council, and there'll be more definition from the state on this as well. But this would be separate from the comp plan process that we're going forward right now. It'd be, it might run parallel to that if there was a desire to do that, which would add another 50 acres. There are some strings attached to that. 30% of it would need to be affordable based on 80% of median family income, that would have to be designated with covenants on it. So that would require property owner participation in that process. There may very well be people in this community that, the property owners that are willing to do that, however. But part of this is, that may be a safety valve of sorts here, and I know the state is also kind of reconsidering the methodology on buildable lands. They're looking at Washington's model a little more closely on allocations at least, in terms of population allocations being perhaps started at the county level, and that's the total, and then the county talks to the cities, and then some cities want more or less land, or more or less development, and so that's how the Washington model works. I can't really give you an, you know, an exact figure as to what I think the acreage should be or not be. We're kind of stuck with the model, but, I mean, I think 80 is a lot better than where we were, which was far less than that, that did not seem reasonable at all to us. And I'm hoping that it is enough. I mean, it does assume and imply that we will be seeing most of the area in the city that's vacant and partially vacant developed in 20 years. That's pretty aspirational in my experience, that you see all that, especially in light of the fact that we still have not seen all the property in the city annex since the plan was approved essentially in '84. Although there was one urban growth boundary expansion in 2005 that was completed, which was about 40 acres of land that has been completely converted.
And my fear is that we make this problem worse. That would be my fear on all.
No, and I hear you. I think part of that is, I mean, this is probably a broader, much broader discussion, and I mean, this is the formula that the state of Oregon is using, and I am more of a proponent of looking at it holistically as to that the land, it does, the amount of land does have a variable on the price of land. And right now, it's more about, the methodology's more about, you know, conversion, it's not about supply.
Maybe at our next meeting, we can have the governor here for a good discussion. We'll get Dan fired.
I mean, it's a good, it's a good conversation. I, you know, I don't, I don't have exact answers that would, you know, solve it. Obviously, the city's doing what it can to help with the situation, and we're one player. There's many aspects to housing affordability that we do not control. But I, you feel like, you know, and I get the fact, you know, that agricultural land is valuable. I mean, that's the other premise here. It really is. It's not, it's a valuable resource. It's challenging when you have all ag land around your entire city that's all high quality. There is no low-quality land. It's all high-quality, so. And then you have 6,000 people who are going to move here, you know, over 20 years, and it's like, how do you, how do you account for that? And so that's the balance that we have to thread.
Shall we move to items of interest?
Yeah, absolutely. There's no other comments. And so this will be coming back again on May 13, just this kind of a prelude for this, and we'll have the consultants here that, if you have more specific questions, and we'll have a PowerPoint with that. So just items, just kind of coming up in general. And I, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of things that kind of were moving forward all at once. I mentioned the Housing Needs Analysis, May 13, City Council Work Session, May 15 on Housing Production Strategies. Sometime this summer, I'm hoping we'll have the Housing Production Strategy for the Planning Commission. The fencing stuff will be coming back again. I know there was a little discussion before the meeting, but believing that probably will be like June 10. Housing Efficiency Measures, June 24. We'll have a number of hearings as well. I believe at least we'll have the Canby Area Transit sometime this summer coming forward. We'll have a Historic Preservation Plan Hearing to adopt a Historic Preservation Plan as part of our, as an ordinance to be able to incorporate that into our comprehensive plan. Jamie Stickell's leading that up. It's been adopted by resolution, it just hasn't been adopted by ordinance, so we're going to do that. Number of other things for, you know, community summits. So we'll have Community Summit on June 20 at Baker Prairie School. I would highly encourage you all to attend, 6:00 PM, June 20. And then the next planning, the project advisory team, or Planning Advisory Team is May 20 for the comprehensive plan, May 29, I'm sorry, May 29 for the comprehensive plan on that. And there's, you know, as there, other stuff comes up, I'll let you know. Those are the main items for what's coming up.
Six PM?
6:00 PM, yeah, Baker Prairie, June 20. There may be other questions you have on other items, but there's, this summer's going to be kind of intense. There's a lot of stuff coming forward.
Okay. Any final comments, thoughts?
I've got one, kind of going back to, a request to the consultants for the meeting with them.
Yeah, yeah.
So you mentioned that if we were to take advantage of the extra 50 acres that the state is offering as a one-time thing, that 30% would have to be offered at 80% of median income. So 80% of an $89,000 median income is $71,000, which, when it breaks down to what somebody can afford, is pretty modest. So if they might have any examples of anybody pulling that off, I'd be really curious to know how and where and when.
But that's based on just a single person, though, right?
Yeah, I think, it's, it's a basically, I think, it's a family income unit, and we do have the exact numbers.
It's based on a family of two, two incomes?
I.
I find that hard to believe.
Well, it, I think it probably is what, you're probably correct. It's probably assuming one income. I'm not sure if it's per household or if it's individual, an individual person.
What the consultants have, I'd like to know that.
Okay.
I think that makes a difference here.
They clarified previously that it's household income, so combined income average was 90.
I will make sure that, we'll clarify that. But I think that's a great question, and I think part of, we can come in with the number. I think, you know, some of these would be not assumed to be, you know, fee-owned. These would be probably, you know, I'm, when we're looking at 80%, I'm not necessarily assuming they're pulling off this where people are buying homes.
Yeah, even if it's just a rental situation, I would just be interested to see some kind of examples of that and what it might look like, because that could help inform the conversation about if we were going to pursue that, like, what could we be advocating for it to actually look like in practical implementation terms?
Gotcha. No, I think that's, it's a great question. And again, I'm not even sure if council's even interested in doing this. And we have some limitations on getting it actually completed, and there's so many parameters around that, but it was interesting that that actually was, the governor was successful with that, given everything else that's going on, conservancy groups, and, I mean, there was a lot of opposition to that bill. And I, so I think from my perspective, it's kind of indicating that there is a level of desperation to solve the issue.
Yeah. Agreed, thank you.
Okay, last call. All right. Should we take a motion to, to call it an evening?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, very well. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.